Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Economic and Cultural Development Committee two thousand and twenty four, the fourth edition, on the third day of September two thousand and twenty four. Councillors in attendance, we've got Deputy Mayor Johnic, Mayor Harding, councillor Antonelli and myself, and in observing, we've got councillor Doyle and councillor Madden. No one else. No apologies. Acknowledgement of country, I'll read that out. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud peoples. Are there any declaration of interest in any of matters on the agenda today? No, there's no business outstanding. We'll go to the confirmation of the minutes. I'll move that the confirmation of the minutes of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, the thirteenth of August. Be moved. Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Johnic. Any discussion on that? Anyone got anything to update? I'll put that to the vote. Everyone in favour? That's unanimously carried. Thank you. So now we'll go, we move to the second confirmation of minutes, which was the special meeting we had on the twentieth of August. So I'll move the adoption of those minutes. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Antonelli. Does, do we have any discussions on any of the? No, I'll put that to the vote. Everyone in favour? That's unanimously carried. Thank you. So now we move to the officers' report. The first one on the list is the two thousand and twenty five netball Queensland State Age Event Championships. Can I have the relevant officer to come up, please? Thank you.
Good morning, Carly Gregory, Marketing and Promotions.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. If you don't mind, could you just give us just a quick snapshot of this, these titles and where they've come from and?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
I think everyone would be aware of netball as a sport, who wouldn't be? Really popular, growing, growing, growing. The last time there was a state championships in Ipswich was twenty eighteen. It used to just be kind of the junior state titles, so association titles. Obviously, since that time, netball has grown so large that they now split the championships, so, and split the age. So it used to finish at under fifteens, under twelve, under fifteens. It's now an under twelves to an under eighteen competition. So they do junior state age and senior state age. Ipswich Netball had applied for the two thousand and twenty five senior state age in two thousand and twenty five. That's held in Easter, which is a phenomenal time for us to have a state age. It's a downtime in terms of accommodation nights and event times that usually starts around May. So this is kind of prime time for us to host this event.
Great, thank you. And what role does Ipswich Netball play in these championships?
So sometimes these applications come via the association. This one has obviously come through netball Queensland. So we have obviously been liaising with Ipswich Netball who did apply. But to make sure that there's absolutely a benefit for the local association. It's not just great to have the economic benefit for the city, but to make sure that we're, you know, helping that association grow. Some simple things. I think when it was last held in Ipswich, they made around forty seven thousand dollars in the canteen alone over a carnival. So they're expecting around forty thousand dollars from local last year's or this year's carnivals, which is great. Netball Queensland runs parking, so paid parking, so it has to lease areas, which it's in the process of working with us on at the moment. And people pay for that. And it also has food trucks, just given the size of the event. So they get a fee for those food trucks as well. So, you know, obviously, most people, in my experience being an eddy mum, would really, they love the food trucks, but they like to support the local canteen. So, yeah.
Yeah, great. And we look at this as a sport, but there's also an economic benefit. So what would the?
Yeah, so the predicted economic benefit, and it's pretty realistic, like, we know sometimes when these carnivals are in a coastal area, it's it's four nights minimum stay for these teams. Some coastal areas will make it a five minimum night booking. And sometimes the economic benefit in those areas can be three times what you'll get in a metro area. The good thing is there's netball teams from all over Queensland, from the very far north, right out west, and really down into northern New South Wales is the netball Queensland area, which is great, like the tweed. The economic benefit that's estimated is around two point five million for this, which is significant in terms of state titles. Often for other sports, they do one age group at a time. So it's around five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars worth of economic benefit, which is great, but this is significantly more than those.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you councillor Antonelli.
Yeah, just, I'm a, you're a netty mum.
You're a netty dad.
I've been a netty dad in the past at some of these carnivals. So, yeah, it's it's great to see. It's also great to see that Ipswich Netball have come so far with their relationship.
I agree.
With Queensland Netball as well. It's really, really promising and great to hear. They are a force to be reckoned with Ipswich Netball in many respects and, because they run one of the best associations in Queensland. So this is really exciting. I actually think the return might be higher than the two point five. I project that to be high. The one thing I do ask is, have we already started discussions with local accommodation houses? Even B and B locations and the like.
Yeah, and the boarding schools, so.
Oh, yes, the boarding schools particularly, that would be great.
That's right. So discussions are already underway. Ipswich, as we know, is well loved as a venue for carnivals because limestone park is a phenomenal asset. It's not only great to see councils' investment in the netball courts being activated, but that whole green space, because often in metro areas, there is no green space around the carnival and you do need time away after you've been there for four or five days at the court side for hours and hours a day. So it's much loved. They have started that, yes councillor Antonelli. Some teams will have already booked their accommodation through those house chains and our destination team is working at the moment to make sure that there's deals for ten and more for things like dinners and leisure activities locally. So we can really drive that economic benefit.
That's good. I do have another question. I don't think it's for you specifically though, so it may relate more so to our infrastructure team. I understand that there's going to be some work done to these courts. Is that going to have an impact or anything?
They are well aware of the works as far as I'm aware. So Ipswich Netball did check with our teams on the dates before the works were being done. We will ensure that there's no clash for obvious reasons. But yes, thank you, but I will double check that.
And and also just another, again, I hate to tell you how to suck eggs, but I guess the only thing that's in my mind also is some of the other sports that use limestone park. Obviously, we started discussions with them so that they don't conflict as well.
Yeah, we'll start comms with those very shortly. And that's obviously in our consideration around parking. I mean, netball Queensland looked and went, oh, there's heaps of parking. We were like, there are, but there are other users. But even things like Park Run is a good example, just making them aware. Yes, that's part of our comms with Sport and Rec, yes.
Thank you. That's good. Because this is huge. If you haven't seen it before up there, it is huge.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you, Miss Gregory. So I move the recommendation. Do I have a second? Thanks councillor Antonelli. Open up for discussion. I can't see a green knobby thing. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think it's gone again. There you go, there.
Thank you.
There. Thank you, thank you.
Chair. Though it's great to see this card, we have a lot of netball carnivals, so to get this state championship back is wonderful, especially after Covid. And I think we actually had a, built a new amenities block there as well a couple of years ago. It was a fifty fifty contribution from the state government. I think Jen Howard secured that funding. It was an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar amenities block, so it really helps in activating that space there. We have a phenomenal, and I'll agree with councillor Antonelli, except for obviously that Ipswich Netball is the best netball association in Australia and, and they're just a phenomenal group of women and families that are there. The the fact that we're actually getting the economic boost of at least two point five million dollars would be much loved by accommodation and hotels and restaurants and shops here as well, as well as getting the canteen earnings. And those development opportunities for the coaches, officials, the networking that happens, it's really great to see that happen as well. So obviously, support this strongly. Thank you.
Yeah, I think with netball, the netball state championship being held in Ipswich since two thousand and eighteen, it's it's a welcome event, especially the way netball is going. We just went to a, for another club to their grand final and wasn't that just exhilarating to see those girls win? So it's going to, it's going to be great to have this over four days over Easter with the expected numbers around, the participants around two thousand two hundred and eighty eight, which, which is great. That, you know, that includes players, coaches and umpires. And then we've also got the, the added accompaniment of their, their partners and spectators and attendees. You know, for four days, it's great. Everyone comes along and loves, I love going to those championships as well. So, and I think the, in the investment that, the economic benefit that our city will get from this, I think it's, yeah, it's going to be a great one. And although funding was sought at forty thousand, I'm very supportive of our recommendation of twenty five thousand plus five thousand five hundred in kind support. And yes, and it must be noted, the the return on investment projections are to two point five million. So I'm very supportive of this recommendation. Councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, just before the age championships were split into the two age categories, the, there was only two or three locations in Queensland that could hold a state age championship. So now that it has been split, obviously, there's going to be a lot of competition around resecuring this event going forward. But one thing that I do remember with Ipswich Netball Association, the plaudits they received for running the best state age championships in the past, no doubt they will replicate that with this. And hopefully, we can secure it on a frequent basis, a more regular basis in the very least.
Definitely. I think everyone would be supportive of that. And also securing potentially other age groups, just not the seniors, would be, would be a great. But let's see how we go with this. And I think the, they'll be all over it, to be honest. So, yes. So I'll just put that to the vote. Everyone in favour? That's unanimously carried. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to item four. Which is the, which is the two thousand and twenty four celebrate two twenty five at Tivoli Drive-In, a major community event sponsorship. So I'll get the relevant officer up again.
Carly Gregory, Marketing and Promotions.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. If we can just have a quick overview of, yeah, this event.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
This event was actually a Covid construct when we had New Year's Eve planned as a sort of city celebration at North Ipswich. And then we had regulations where we could not mass gather. And the only way we could think of bringing people together was to keep them in their cars and go to the drive-in. And it was highly successful and now it's an annual event. So, look, again, you know, it's a great event. It's family friendly. Tivoli is much loved in our area. And, you know, the great thing is that any of the benefits they get economically go back into the community in terms of their training programs, which is phenomenal. So we're all, I think, very aware of that. I suppose, you know, the the question probably that's quite common is they have asked for twenty and we're saying fifteen grand. It is a great event, but it's not the only event in the city anymore. We're out of Covid restrictions. We really encourage people to attend lots of venues across the city. We are aware of some other events that are being planned for New Year's Eve as free community events. And like a carols event, I suppose this is what it's most like in terms of that. We have been pulling back the funding to make them more sustainable. We do know that definitely in the application as well, Tivoli had indicated that they've made some investments in that, which would mean that things like tech should cost them less in terms of hire. And that was the assessment made by the panel for the fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. And what extra in-kind donations do we have around this particular event?
Obviously, the great thing about this venue is that there's infrastructure already built, like amenities blocks and things. But also with an increased number of people comes the things like extra amenities that we can provide as in kind. It's, you know, and even things like picket fencing so that you can show people where to enter and exit and those kind of things.
Yeah, great. And just from previous years, not Covid, but just after that. So is it right to say, this is just me, just, have we got four New Year's, like last year, was there four? And are we trying to get them in, one in each division?
So, not actual events, but council up until now, and I'm assuming we'll bring a briefing note shortly to council, has run fireworks, family-friendly fireworks at nine PM in every division. So people can literally gather in a local park or stand in their backyard and see a fireworks display to celebrate the new year, as many people, you know, gather in their homes. This has provided the fireworks for division four in past years, which is why we've given them an increased level of funding to that of a carols event to subsidise some of that as well.
Thank you. Councillor Antonelli?
Yes, I was just going to ask with respect to the in-kind, do we support them with marketing in kind?
Yeah, so it's, New Year's Eve is obviously part of the Christmas in Ipswich program. So anything that's included in the program is part of our marketing. Yeah.
Right. May, no, because I still can't see your green knobby thing. It keeps going full. Thank you, Miss Gregory. Sorry about that. More questions? I'll move that the recommendation in item four be adopted. Do I have a second? Thank you, Deputy Mayor Johnic. Open for discussion? No? Chair, all right. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, the most wonderful time of the year is approaching. And I guess with the warm weather, the Christmas and New Year's holiday season is upon us. So I think it's a time for us to come together and council looks at supporting the many events across Ipswich. Especially as we grow and our population grows, it's great to see multiple numbers of events to, you know, to make it so, it brings community together as well. Supporting these events means the community can attend for free. This one in particular is a very family-friendly, alcohol-free event, including fireworks, and attracts more than five thousand attendees, is broadcast into aged care villages and homes across the city. There's so much variety, there's so many stalls, there's, it's a great New Year's Eve up at Tivoli. And I just hope the community keep coming out and supporting it. As long as they are, then then council keeps supporting it.
Thank you, ma'am. I, yeah, concur with your statements as well. I think it's, New Year's Eve is always such a special, you know, you're leaving one year and going into the next. And, yeah, I think the Tivoli event's going to be great. It's got music, food, dance. What else do you need? It's family-friendly, drug and alcohol-free. Get on down. So I'll be supporting this recommendation as in the report. So? Anyone else? No?
I'm just usually asleep at midnight. I'll just add that.
Oh, come on.
The fireworks are on earlier, just saying.
I might have to include laughing into it, maybe.
Oh, thank you. So I'll put that to the vote as the recommendations. All those in favour? Thank you. That's unanimously carried. Move on to item five, which is Ipswich Regia, Region Chamber of Commerce partnership agreement for two thousand and twenty four to twenty five and twenty five to twenty six. Does anyone have any questions? No? Oh, you do. Oh, okay.
And the officer, bringing the officer up. My question is just, I take it the thirty five thousand, is that specific to a particular amount? Or is that just an agreed amount? We've come up with them. So in other words, to get a certain level of sponsorship or partnership status, you pay X? Or have we just agreed to give them that money? I'm not sure. Is that a, you understand where I'm coming from with the question?
Might ask the officer to come forward if that's okay, if Mr Heenan wouldn't mind.
Happy for them to answer from there if they want to.
I guess while Mr Heenan's coming up here, it's, it's been an amount that has been in place for a few years now and is for a range of activities and has been sought by the the chamber.
So, yeah, just to, just to put on, I don't have any issues with the amount. I just wondered whether it was actually just a set amount or whether it's an agree, something we've just agreed to with them.
Oh, yeah.
Dan Heenan, Economic Development Manager. I think Sonia has answered the question perfectly. There's, there's a range of activities that we work with on the chamber every year, which have been summarised in, in their submission to us. And in exchange for those activities, that's the amount that they've requested and we've put forward today.
I'm satisfied with that. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you. Yeah, you're right. Thank you. If there's no more questions, I will move the recommendations. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Antonelli. Open for discussion. Oh, I can see your green.
You can see that they're.
Speaker now. Mayor?
I think, which is, the council enjoys a very positive and collaborative partnership with the Ipswich Region Chamber of Commerce. Council plays an important role in supporting the success of businesses in our local community. And we also rely on the the chamber and the businesses in our community to provide the goods and services as well as provide local jobs for people as well. So support of the chamber is supporting our community and allows the chamber to advocate, to, to train, to connect, to build professional relationships and network. So as our economy and population grows, so do the, so do the opportunities for our businesses as well. So this provides the chamber with that ability to, for them, again, to continue the professionalisation that they do. And obviously, we're very proud to be the first small business friendly council in Queensland. And it's great to see our continued support for local businesses.
Thank you, ma'am. I do note that it, in the report, it's stated Ipswich Ranger Region Chamber of Commerce is the largest in the region with a great diverse membership. I have been to a number of the events and do know the businesses receive a great deal of benefit from networking opportunities, been part of the chambers and I think that's a, we need to be supportive of our businesses so they can get those networking opportunities. So I'll be supporting this recommendation. So going forward, do we have any more discussion? No? I'll put that to the vote. Everyone in favour? Thank you. That's carried unanimously. We'll move on to item six. Which is the Nicholas Street Precinct Project Control Group. This one here, I don't have any questions, but I think it's, I think we need to read out the full recommendation because it's from one, so we've got it, know what we're voting on here. Just think. So the recommendation is that the council note the establishment of the Nicholas Street council note the establishment of the Nicholas Street Precinct Project Control Group. Um and associated terms of reference in line with council's resolution on the twenty-third of May, two thousand and twenty-four. Um B, that council abolished the existing Retail Subproject Steering Committee, which is now replaced by the Nicholas Street Precinct Project Control Group. And that council write to the Minister for Housing, Local Government and Planning, and Minister for Public Works uh to advise of the amended governance arrangement. So it's just going from one to the other. Um so um I move those. Has anyone got firstly, has anyone got anything of the relevant officer? Yep.
I just want to chair of the C E O. Um would the state government, at officer to officer level, be aware that this is coming?
Um, no, I don't believe so specifically, but certainly why we would very much um be proceeding to write to the minister. Uh and it would be, I think, a good idea for us to give the relevant uh officers that we deal with over the um in in seeking their advice in relation to the ministerial exemption that applies and the, as you know, the six monthly reporting that that goes to the department, it'd be wise for us to give them a heads-up that it's coming and that we write then formally under your signature, May, um if, should this matter proceed.
Thank you, C E O, thank you.
Thank you. Uh Deputy Mayor, did you?
Just in relation, I guess, to um the recommendation that come before this um this establishment of this project control group and really around that risk register and understanding, and I have just found it in the terms of reference, so that's wonderful and just making sure that that gets captured um for the purpose basically of why it's being formed. And and that will get reported through to this committee as well. Yeah, wonderful. Thank you.
If I can seek to offer further assurance, since the council on the twenty-third of May, sorry, through the chair, um uh did approve the the ten recommendations of the venue uh contract review uh report, uh there has been considerable work done, of course, to implement those recommendations. We're going to have a um a consolidated risk register. Uh it's uh already um together and and absolutely will be uh tabled uh at each of the uh project control group meetings. And uh the minutes of those meetings will be reportable as has been the the case with the steering committee through to this committee. Um and happy to take any further, you know, direction or information you'd like to to see in terms of how we report and what we report on.
Hmm. Just interested, I guess, in that risk register for, I guess, the wider uh obviously confidentially, but for this committee to then be able to see, other than just the minutes, I guess, of the group, just.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be reporting that through um to the Audit and Risk Management Committee as well. It probably would be something that we would keep as confidential.
Yeah.
Um there'd be elements um that would be confidential. So if I can just, yeah, give you an assurance that we're very happy to provide it to the committee.
Yep.
Uh it may just be confidential, but I'll take advice on that.
Thanks, C E O.
Thank you. Um if we don't have any more questions, I'll move to adopt those recommendations. Do I have a seconder? Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Um discussion? No, I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimously carried, thank you. And now we move on to item seven, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct August Retail Sub uh Project Steering Committee Report. So this is the so this is the report that we've just voted on that's going to be replaced. Yes. So does anyone have questions for the relevant officer?
Sorry, I'm just rearranging my pack. It's in a different order.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go on. Yeah, yeah, it was, sorry. Um, yeah, I should have, um, yeah. It was a late one and then it bumped the um the notice of motion. Yes. We're good. Sorry about that, I should. No, no, we go to seven and then we'll do eight. Sorry, it is eight on yours, but it's been bumped into seven. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so any questions? No, we'll put that to the, um we'll move that, sorry, we'll move those recommendations. Have I got a seconder for that? Thank you, Council Antonelli. Um discussion? No discussion, I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimously carried, thank you.
You'll keep us all informed, I'm sure.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, yes.
Because that's quite exciting.
Um, okay, now we go to the notice of motion. Notice of motion, um was to the Welcome Home Civic Event uh for Ipswich Olympians and Paralympics. So this was a joint motion submitted by the mayor and myself um concerning a welcome home civic event for Ipswich Olympians and Paralympics. So that we um, the intention is to um have something um within September. Yeah. Um so I move to adopt that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, May. Uh do we have any discussions on that?
Yes, please.
Thanks, May.
Chair. Uh this is a joint notice and a motion between myself and the Chair of the um Economic Cultural Development Committee for a welcome home civic event for Ipswich Olympians and Paralympians. We have three Ipswich um athletes who competed at the Paris Olympics. And we have two Ipswich athletes that are currently competing right now in the Paris Paralympic Games. Uh Molly O'Callaghan in swimming, Ella Ramsey in swimming, and Tara Moana, Tara Moana in boxing, Tammy Kenton Smith in pa- para archery, and Poppy Wilson in parasymping. Uh Council Augustine and I see tremendous value in holding a free civic event in our civic plaza, Tumal Place. Uh it's an easy place to activate, to honour those athletes and show council and our community support. These Olympians and Paralympians have not only achieved personal greatness, but they've also brought pride to our community. You can't be what you can't see. So celebrating their success with a public event does more than just mark their accomplishments. It serves as encouragement and a powerful reminder of what amazing heights its residents can achieve. This civic celebration will help to foster a strong sense of uh community and pride while inspiring future generations to pursue their dreams. This is particularly told by given, we are now on our own runway to the Brisbane twenty thirty-two games. Thank you.
Thank you, May. Council Antonelli?
Yes, I'm just wondering whether um are you both entertaining the idea of um including um and I know he didn't attend the Olympics, but um he has performed extremely well, uh another local athlete in Gout Gout, um perhaps somehow include him in such celebration.
Um, yeah, I'm probably not in favour of that. I think the the thing that we haven't um put in this here um is um oh, sorry, I forget his surname, but Steve um the umpire for
Yes, correct, Steve Rogers, yeah.
In this as well.
Should be included in that as well.
Yeah.
As an official.
Yeah, just the accolades around, um you know, Molly receiving three gold medals, a silver and a bronze, and um and Ella, um you know, you have to feel for her, you know, she qualified and then um you know, contracted
Yeah, Val.
Oh, COVID nineteen, just terrible timing. And then Terra Tara Moana, Tara Moana um winning unanimously, in a first round knockout. And then um he went, actually went the distance, but was in unanimous defeat against the Olympic champion. Um Poppy Wilson um should be competing to, I think it's tonight at seven thirty-three P M in the Butterfly. Um and then the forty metre freestyle um the four hundred metre freestyle is on Thursday um at five fifty-four P M, if you want to be precise. So and our archer, he'll be um competing on Thursday um at six P M, and that's in the mix and in his event at tomorrow at eight fifty-four. Gee, they're precise with their timings, aren't they? Uh so we just say good luck to our Paralympics. Um and also, yes, Steve Rogers, we need to pay a bit of respect to him as well. He did a fabulous job out there, so.
Think he actually um officiated one of the gold medal matches.
Yes. So sport is, um, yeah, sports stars are, yeah, coming thick and fast. We have to make sure that our our policies and procedures um with our trickling down into our sports clubs um are very strong and that 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 highway down to Brisbane has been notorious for the smoke, not of the um, the um smoke coming out of the exhaust pipe, it's the smoke coming out of the wheels of our athletes flying down that highway to Brisbane. So uh we've got some good ones here and we'll look to um put some good policies in place to keep them here. Yes, May?
Um if I could suggest um that this is done in accordance with council civic um and ceremony, celebration ceremonial policy. Um and I just, um I think the idea, we were, we were spoiling chair. Um after the Tokyo Games, which was in twenty twenty-one, um I was fortunate enough to attend in Brisbane, the 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 premier held a return of all the Olympic and Paralympic athletes and and officials as as well. And so sort of trying to emulate that here, um I think is what, so I think any other discussions about the fin- the finer things that probably we could do within the policy with the the councillors.
Okay. Council Antonelli?
I do reiterate the fact that I think that whether or not we um acknowledge him in the recommendation or at least have him as part of the ceremony uh at present, uh Gout Gout, it would be a great opportunity for him too to meet some uh local Olympians, um inspire him further. Uh he is, um there's certainly a lot of talk doing the rounds about his future, um and certainly his um achievements at the World um Youth Games seems to uh be putting him on the path to success. So uh I think it would be great for him and also the Ipswich public to see him as well as part of that ceremony.
Yeah, I I agree. I think, sorry, um I think we um, yeah, we can work out those finer details and see what you know, what's best and how we can really, um, yeah. Thanks, May.
Uh we have a number of athletes in Ipswich who have competed at the world championships and as well as youth championships. So I think, yeah, let's, sorry. Uh uh so I think it'd be a good opportunity for us to to work together on that.
Totally agree. Deputy Mayor, did you have something?
Just putting my financial management cap on for a second and love this.
Go on, yeah, put it on. What's, what have, what have you got?
And knowing that the school holidays are coming up and we've got some events in Tumal Place running as well and know, I I guess with our other grants and funding in previous motions, oh, sorry, um reports, they're they're part of our budget process already. So this is one that's very relevant and should be celebrated, but not captured in a particular budget. So I think maybe there could be some, and I'm not in the event space, but
Opportunity, yeah.
An opportunity to
Yeah, leverage off.
Save some money. That's all.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I love your fiscal responsibility hat just there, uh Deputy Mayor. Um I think there has been talks that we can leverage off um other events, but I think we, yeah, in the finer details, let's see how we can get that to, yeah, partner up with something.
I I think that's the benefit of us having Tumal Place, we're activating what's there, or if we have food trucks or what's there. I think the the school holiday program from May is the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth of September. So whether we do it in that or outside that.
Yeah, very much.
I guess there were some things we can work out.
Very much cognizant of our financial responsibility around, you know, uh delivering things. So we'll work out the finer details on this and I think it'll be a great little ceremony um for the city. So in that um manner, we'll put that to the vote, everyone in favour. And that's unanimously carried. I s- I seen you. I got. In saying that, we come to the close of this meeting. Uh close, um oh, no. Sorry, we're not closing, we're not closing. Dr, dr, dr. Um so I'd like to move um that in pursuant of section, I can't even read that, I'll read up from there. Of section seven of Ipswich City Council Terms of Reference, that Council Marley Doyle be appointed as a member of the Economic and Cult and cultural. I was like, oh, development committee. Um, just have a second. Thank you, An- Council Antonelli. Um anyone want to speak on that? No, put it to the vote, all in favour. Welcome aboard, councillor Doyle. We've missed you. Uh so that comes to an end for this meeting at, what are we?
And Chair May also suggests that we adjourn for thirty minutes.
Yes, we're twelve, yeah. So we'll adjourn for thirty minutes, all in favour of thirty-minute break. Thank you. So we'll come back at um twelve forty-five. Great. Thank you very, everyone.